Randy Rentsch, Beau Barton, Melinda Ballard, Bearin Glass, Maria Bass, Gary Castle, Johnny Fallon.
All right, item A is executive meeting report.
Went over all the checks, everything seems to be in order. Sales tax were down thirty thousand dollars from one of the ones that came last year. Hopefully that's a glitch somewhere that hadn't called up to it yet, but we don't know that for sure. And David, that made our already asked papers. And so we're just hoping maybe there's something there that has been missed that hasn't come in yet. But if that's the case, we just need people shopping home.
Well, we've done some research on this, if I can interject, but in trying to generate sales tax. So shopping at home and if you order online, we in Louisiana are a delivery state. So it's taxed not at the point of sale, but at the point of delivery. So like if you shop at Sam's or you shop at Walmart or if you do it online and have it delivered, the sales tax comes back to Cowell. So I think just kind of educating people that you can still, you know, do the things, but as much as you do locally, you can shop our Dollar Generals, our grocery stores, our local pharmacies, but those online sales all come back to Cowell Parish.
But Ren, I think it's since we're in a new age in technology, we need to look at it differently than we looked at it in the past. If you can go to Timu or somewhere else and get something that's two or three dollars, that's cheaper than going to whatever store here, that's what they're gonna do. So I think we're just gonna have to become more creative and look at life a little different than, you know, the way that we have, 'cause thirty thousand, I don't think I've ever heard that in thirty years.
I haven't seen it.
And that's not good.
Never did it. Yeah, hopefully it's a glitch or somewhere, but if it's not a glitch, then David.
And there is a new tax successor. We had John Betts for a hundred years and he's retired, so I don't know if that's part of it yet. So, and we have had one year where, I mean, a few months ago where they were, they missed about half of the people. I think they had a glitch at that point, I don't remember what the phrase was. So, we'll know more next month.
Raise the questions, call attention to it.
Item B is review and vote on approval of the August 2024 board meeting minutes, September 5th, 2024 transportation committee meeting minutes, and September 10th, 2024 executive committee meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the eighth, the fifth, and the eighth.
All in favor, say aye. All right, item C is recognize James Wells as a September employee of the month. It's Scott Walker.
Good evening, everyone.
My pleasure, my pleasure.
Thank you again for having me. It's our pleasure to start the new year partnering again on recognizing the employee of the month. Mr. Wells, I've got a couple of nice things to say about you here. I'll read them, I didn't say, how about that? James is a very detail-oriented person and takes much pride in his work. He is able to streamline many projects and works hard to run things efficiently. He is constantly juggling last-minute changes and coordinating drivers, buses, sports teams, and students. He always makes sure the district is maintained and taken care of. He is also known around the central office as the Christmas decorator. At Christmas time, he brings Christmas cheer to the office with his outside decorations that he installs on the weekends and with his fun vintage office decor. I appreciate the time and effort that he puts into everything he does. Mr. James always makes sure the school board office grounds are well-maintained and clean and comes on weekends to avoid blowing and weeding while people are at work. I appreciate that more than he knows. So please join me in congratulating Mr. James Wells.
Thanks, everybody, I appreciate it. Definitely honored to be recognized and don't worry, I'm gonna keep doing my job.
James, I remember when you couldn't get you to say two words. I remember when we couldn't get you to say two words.
I know. I'm coming out of my chair. I know, I know it's two words.
All right, I'm gonna ask to move item K up to right here, if that's okay with everybody? Item K adopt a resolution supporting the efforts of Strategic Biofuels LLC and Louisiana Green Fuels LLC.
It's all right, I'm gonna buy a ten or twelve minutes here. I've got a copy. I'm gonna move my chair over here so I can kind of speak to everybody rather than having people behind me, if that's okay? First of all, thank you for having me here tonight. Thank you, Madam Superintendent, for getting this on, but we only, this really came up like Tuesday. When it occurred to me, I said, "We need to do this," and I got thinking about the calendar and I said, "I think they meet this week," so, and I know you have agenda issue, all that stuff that you have to deal with. So thank you for accommodating. We have a resolution, we'll get to the reason for that in a moment. But David sent me a note earlier today and said, "Could you," you know, we're considering a resolution, "but could you come and just give us an update on the project?" The key to this project ever being complete and constructed and operational is relies heavily on local public support. So we take every opportunity to speak, and I'm not speaking just to the school board, I'm kind of including everyone here, speaking to the community. Now, I would say this, is anybody here a reporter?
Right, yeah, well, it's live.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, I just want to be careful it doesn't get put in the newspaper that get misinterpreted or things like that. So we'll talk about, but we'll talk about a lot of things if I have a few minutes. This is an enormous project. It will likely exceed four billion dollars. It has three major components. And a lot of this, what I'm telling, the reason I'm telling you this is because there's a lot of things you're gonna stand and it's best that we get the community as best educated as we can as to what it is, how it works, why it works, all that. There are three major components. The basic one, of course, is, as you know, is a bio-refinery. We will take forestry waste in the form of what we consider pulpwood. There's no market for pulpwood anymore, paper mills shutting down with the add-ins, internet, all that. But trees are still growing. Pulpwood, pulpwood are thinings, they're not grown, pulpwood is not grown because it's looking for to sell pulpwood. There are thinings that are removed so that the remaining trees can grow to full timber. That's where the real value is, in timber. So there is a tremendous oversupply of pulpwood, okay? A lot of it not even being harmed, but a lot of thinning is not being done because there's, it doesn't make any economic sense to do it. We're gonna take those thinings, wood is, this is in very simplistic terms, very complex molecules of carbon, hydrogen, and cellulose. It's very easy to understand. We all learned in eighth grade, CO2 out of the air, Cs and Os. H2O out of the ground, Hs and Os, a few little things that are in the water to get in there, but basically it sees Hs and Os, and they're getting these complex molecules. Because the first time when you say, "We're gonna make jet fuel out of pine trees," people say, "What are you talking, you know, can't do that." Well, you have to understand what the basic elements are. So through a bio-refinery process, chip up, chip up these forestry thinings, pulpwood, into small chips, and we will gas up out of them at about twenty-four hundred degrees Fahrenheit, and break them down into their whole basic elements. And then recombine them into Hs and Cs, hydrocarbons, that's the fuel. Cs and Os, that's the carbon dioxide, which we will capture, talk more about that in a minute. And then there's some Hs and Os, there's some water that comes out of the process. So it's just rearranging those basic fundamental elements. Okay, so one thing we have changed in the last year, this project started as renewable diesel for a number of reasons, which I won't get into. We have determined that really the better, the more, the better demand is really for on the jet fuel side. People talk about electric vehicles and, well, the demand for transportation fuels is gonna go down. Nobody's talking about realistically electrifying airplanes, okay? They're not doing it. All right, who wants to ride an electric airplane? I don't. So, but the aviation industry is a major emitter of carbon emissions. And the only way to lower that is through a carbon negative fuel. I gotta be careful there because I can get very long, so I know y'all got other things to do. But the fuel that we, that we will refine in this refinery will have a carbon intensity score of minus two-hundred-and-ninety-four. Compare that with jet fuel that came from Exxon and Baton Rouge, for instance, you know, sourced from crude oil, would be like plus ninety. You get into ethanol and gasoline blends, you can get it down to about plus seventy-five. You can make diesel out of soybeans, you can get it about plus fifty-five. You can use cooking oil, you can get it down to about plus twenty maybe. You can, then if you use just all of this with emitting the CO2, and then if you use forestry waste, you can get it down to like plus eight, okay? But when you, that's using, that's the first part of it, using forestry waste, okay? If you're emitting CO2, it takes a lot of power to power that refinery, huge amount of power. If you take that off the grid, that's natural gas power. There are emissions back at the power plant related to fossil fuels, which are negative about the score. So we eliminate that. We're gonna put a power plant in right beside the bio-refinery where we use additional biomass waste, burn it, take water out of the river, burn the biomass waste, create steam, turn the turbines and generate eighty-six megawatts of power, electric power, to power the refinery. It's a tiny amount that will come off of the grid, but very, very low for other reasons. That then makes this whole operation operate off the grid. Now think about that, so we're using nothing but biomass and this whole thing is running on its own, okay? Each of these two components have a CO2 emission. We will capture both of those and then compress them into a supercritical, compress them into a supercritical state, certain pressure you have to get to and all of that, and then inject that into three wells where they will be more than a mile underground, permanently sequestered forever. When you combine all of these things that we're doing, that carbon, when you add in green power, it takes that plus eight score, which is start bit, down to maybe minus one-hundred. And then when you sequester the CO2 off of both of those processes and rather than emit it, it takes it all the way down to minus two-ninety-four. Now what is significant about that is, is that it will be the most deeply carbon-negative liquid fuel in the world. Some people have said, "Well, how come you can do that and nobody else can?" Well, others can. What we're doing differently is we're combining all of these into one, into one operation. That's what's unique about it, okay? The reason it's important to get that carbon score down to a minimum is because one of the major sources of revenue, and there are about five or six streams of revenue that support this very expensive operation. One of the major ones is, are carbon credits under the low-carbon fuel standard in California. In order to earn those, the fuel, the sustainable aviation fuel that we, that we refine will be shipped by rail to Cali, has to go to California, physically has to go to California. The more deeply carbon-negative that the fuel is, the more credit you earn. So, I'm gonna skip over buses and stuff here, okay? Now, the economic returns on this are good, I mean, if you're gonna attract a lot of money, we have, a lot of it is, will be debt from the Department of Energy. It's not, it's not grants, it has to be repaid, it is lower interest. But they will, Department of Energy will loan money on things that are not otherwise bankable, bankable commercial. You can't get no banking money. This is, this is new, it's unprecedented, it's not being done anywhere else. You can't borrow the money to do it. So that's, this is a good place for the government to step in and say, "Okay, we're trying to innovate here, okay? But we're not giving you the money, but we'll loan you the money, okay, under more favorable terms." So, in order to advance these three different components, there's an awful lot of work to be done. There is a huge amount of engineering, tens of millions of dollars of engineering to design this plant. You're familiar, of course, with Hatch, who are engineering company, who has provided, initiated the STEM program here. And I understand that they have, they've sort of re-upped on that and they're gonna stay with it. They were obviously waiting to see what was it gonna take home, and it obviously did. The system has done a magnificent job of promoting that and the staff and the students have performed exceptionally well. They take note of that, that's what got the renewal, okay? There is a tremendous amount of permit. The core permit, and this really gets to what we're talking about today. The primary, most important permit is the class six permit that will give us the right to inject the carbon dioxide more than a mile underground. It starts with the EPA, who has the statutory authority to issue the class six, okay? EPA doesn't have the personnel to administer all of it, but they have the right to do it. And so they then... And so they then enter into agreements with the individual states to delegate that authority to the individual states after the states demonstrate that they have the robust regulatory authority to oversee it all that. We made our application in March of twenty-twenty-three. Uh, we had zero notices of deficiency, which every other application went up there. We watched it on the website. We were the only one that didn't get a notice of deficiency of some, something on it. This was a fifteen-thousand-page application. In December twenty-three, EPA granted Primacy, is what it's called, to Louisiana. Most of you are familiar with that. Which means now the Louisiana Department of Energy and Natural Resources has that authority. They've got EPA looking over their shoulder and making sure they're doing it right, okay? So it's, the regulatory oversight here is extreme, okay? So we had, we had to rework the, the application to meet the, some specific DNR things that were done earlier this year. That application process is proceeding. We hope, based on what they told us, to be among the first out of their twenty-six applications they have that were transferred from EPA to DNR. Early on, when you looked at the website, of those twenty-six, four had advanced through the various steps of the review process over to under technical review. We were one of the four. In my conversations with, with the staff there, we are, it is suggested that we will be indeed among the first, which should occur early next year. That's what we believe. Now, one of the sections of that report, since we filed that, that application a year and a half ago, well, then the EPA came in, that was in March of twenty-three, July twenty-three, EPA came in and said, okay, here's what we need for the environmental justice section. We, there was one already, and we admit that. But then they greatly expanded it, what the requirements to meet that particular section. We'll talk about what environmental justice is limited. That was in summer twenty-three. And then it went to the state, well, the state has additional requirements for environmental justice. Environmental justice is a major issue in getting this permit. And what that is about is ensuring, think about this now, more of a nationwide thing, that, that industrial projects, which may have some environmental impact, are not because of where they're placed, that they disproportionately impact disadvantaged communities. That is a major, major issue that the environmental justice section is designed to overcome and show that, that that is not the case. So we have just completed a, an exhaustive environmental justice impact report, which will be shipped to Baton Rouge shortly to supplement our current pending application. As part of that, and of course it shows, as most of us here who are familiar with the parish and our demographics and where the plant is and all of that, um, that, that there, there should be no concerns there. But we have to prove that, and we have to show it with all the statistics. And that you, it would blow your mind how many different statistics are in this report. It's very, very lengthy. So everything you can imagine is in there. And of course it concludes, what we all do with the case, that there are no, this, there are no communities, particularly disadvantaged communities, that would be disproportionately impacted from anything from this plant. It makes it a little easier because we don't have any environmental issues anyway. We've already received an air permit, okay, a year and a half ago. Uh, we actually, because of the carbon negativity, we got, we actually improve the atmosphere every day we operate. We are taking CO2, the trees are taking CO2 out of it. It doesn't, we forget about, they don't hold it permanently, trees eventually die, and they decay, or they're burned, and the CO2 goes back. Eventually, okay? Except in this case, it doesn't go back. So therefore, that's, that's the impact this has had. By the way, I want to say one more thing about the carbon negativity. In order to reach so-called net carbon zero, everybody probably read about, everybody heard Carbon Footprint. I gave you some scientific numbers. But to reach so-called net carbon zero by twenty-fifty, which is an international acclaim to go, okay? It's very fundamental. You cannot get to zero if you don't have some negatives. Impossible. You can't just have more positives. Everything else out there, all the other renewables, they, they are, they are less positive than fossil fuels. They're not negative. Ours is negative. So negative that you can take one gallon of what we're gonna produce, blend it with three gallons, I'm just gonna say Exxon Baton Rouge jet fuel, and you have net carbon zero. No one even, has ever even had a solution for that. This is it. Now, look, this may take a hundred years for the world to get, get there. It's gotta start somewhere, so why not here, okay? It actually will work. If, forget all, whatever you think about climate, it doesn't matter. This is the way the world is going. It's the way it's going. I'm, I'm an oil and gas dinosaur, okay? It doesn't matter. This is the way the world is going. Low carbon is where it's at. Everything is designed, the entire world is set up to make this happen. All right, so back to the environmental justice thing. This is a major portion of our Class Six application, okay? It's the last major portion of that, which is pending with Department of Energy and Natural Resources right now. As part of that, community engagement, and that's the reason I wanted to get over here and talk to the community, okay? Community engagement is the cornerstone of, of the environmental justice action and, and the investigation. Making sure that everyone understands, the reason I'm taking a little time here to talk about all this, is to be as open about what we're doing, why we're doing it, why does it work financially? Why do we, why are we doing this? Why aren't we doing that? Why is it taking so long? What, all that stuff, okay? I deal with that every day, okay? Part of that is, we have to have, show that the community supports and agrees with our conclusions of this environmental justice impact report, okay? It makes no sense if we send this in and said it's, that it's, uh, there is no adverse environmental justice impact, and the school board vote says, oh, yes, there is, okay? So we need to get, we want to get this out, talk about it, give an opportunity for questions. Um, if, this obviously, once it's submitted, it will, public information, there will be a public hearing. I'm probably gonna ask you that we use the Fine Arts Building down there probably sometime next spring. Once they send us a draft permit, hopefully in the first quarter next year, along with that will be a notice of public hearing. I don't know, I, I got a feeling there's gonna be a lot of public interest in this, not, not, just because they wanna know what this is all about. It's because it's new. So that is likely to occur in the spring. So this resolution that I composed this afternoon, did you, would you even like a copy of that? Okay. This resolution is, will, we will use this as an attachment to the environmental justice impact report, which as a whole will be just one section that we will upload into this portal, some complicated IT thing we got that should submit all this stuff through, uh, to Baton Rouge. But it, we, we previously had, for other reasons, not from this particular issue, but we, a century earlier, we got one from the police jury back in twenty-two. That was just on the whole idea of just saying, hey, we're generally, we have a problem with carbon sequestration, sequestration up here. They got problems in South Louisiana because they're so mishandled it. And it's, it's in the water bottoms and all that. We're not there, so we don't have those issues. Very fortunately, this parish, this school board, police jury, everybody in this parish has been supportive of this project, and we have touted that everywhere we go, investors ask us that all the time. They don't wanna come in here and put money, if, if there's public opposition, not me, I'm out, okay? They wanna know that this is accepted by the community, supported by the community, and will do good for the board, okay? All right. So this resolution is to, uh, just basically sets forth that the school board is in as good a position as anyone else to make an assessment of the fact that there is, there is no negative environmental justice impact, okay? It's basically is there to support what the, what the consultants, and we paid a lot of money to, to compile this report, have concluded with all their tables and, and figures and, and history and all of that stuff. I mean, gets into all kinds of things. Uh, and gets into all kinds of demographics, et cetera. And if they're looking at an, an area that is like a five-mile radius from the plant site, more or less. It actually extends over, it just barely crosses the Beth River, where there's a little point, that, over into Ridgefield Parish. So it's a very extensive thing. So, uh, that's the purpose of this, of this resolution is to, it will, it will accompany this environmental justice impact report to show that further we have engaged with the community, which is what I'm doing right now, okay? And, uh, and that the community supports this project. I've taken way longer than I should have, but I, there's no way to talk about this project in a shorter time. It's impossible. So, anyway, I will appreciate your consideration of it, and, um, and I'll be happy to answer any questions of anybody else.
Rebecca, what, 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 uh, language did you change other than what Bob had on the initial letter?
Oh, um, so originally it talked about the diesel. And so I took some language from, well, actually I work with Ken, um, from their website, with currently. So where it said diesel, now it says, um, uh, jet fuel. I, I get bogged down in those seasonal. And then I just changed dates and added CPSB from what the police jury had drafted, which, so.
But then, but then what I did, I got to look, thinking about it this afternoon, and I got to realizing, I read that police jury thing, which was October twenty-two. It was for a different purpose, things that chance that, that's not really fair to send school board and say, hey, just change it from police jury to school board. That, that really didn't work. So I just sat down this afternoon and I just re-rubbed it for the specific purpose. And with apologies to my daughter for, for a time she spent on the other one. But this one is brand new, and it is focused on this environmental justice report and, and, and the, and the assessments that we're asking the school board to hopefully make that are in agreement with the report that we've generated.
Well, and from what I'm reading over it, it, it talks about that this project will provide educational opportunities for our children. It, um, talks about the board being seven members who represent various districts throughout the parish. Talks about, um, the tax revenue that we expect to be generated, um, as a result of this, uh, project. And that we depend on those tax revenues to, for infrastructure, for our school buildings, and for salaries for our teachers and staff. Talks about the, um, fact that we are expanding programs and educational offerings at our schools to meet the, uh, requirements of the future jobs for our parish. And then the fact that we've already done the industrial tax exemption shows that we have good faith in the project and support it. And that we, um, are informed and remain updated as much as possible from the project. And, uh, again, the impacts that are planned, uh, for the environmental, economic, and overall quality of citizens of Caldwell Parish and the relationship that we have, um, will, uh, help our disadvantaged communities, uh, provide jobs, and, um, the overall economic, or environmental, uh, benefits of this, and that we support this project at the Board of Columbia. That's my gist.
So Bob, who, who's district, Randy, is that your district?
Oh, yeah, this is about a quarter mile from my house.
Because I think, Bob, the only hurdle that you would have to get over, which you over, which would be if it was somewhere close to my district, which, if you're trying to satisfy the Justice Department and all that, so I don't have an issue with it.
Well, I think, well, it, it would still satisfy, but it would be, but the conclusion of the report would say, if it was there, then you're really gonna have to go in and,
Right, which you didn't have to.
Didn't have to, because of where he is, correct.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't have an issue with it, Randy, that's your district, so. You gotta go with what you, uh, what you feel, man. But it's complicated, you know, because they, they, they are strict and rigorous when it comes to that.
Has the police jury voted on this?
They, they, in October of twenty-two, uh, they gave a unanimous vote of support for the project.
That's the same thing you did.
And it's, yeah.
This is just the same thing for another.
It's for another purpose. This is a more, there's so many things that we have to pursue.
That's what I'm asking.
Right.
Has the police jury voted on this?
Not on, not on this one, but this just came up, this really just came up on.
Have they done a vote on it?
Um, I guess I, I guess I could ask them. I mean, they will, but I hadn't really thought about that because I'm relying on the existing support of the project from that October twenty-two resolution. But I didn't really have anything from the school board. You'd, you'd, we talked about it, the industrial tax exemption. But I really didn't have a specific resolution of support from the school board, which is the purpose for, so I got to think, I go, well, this really is, I really need to do something similar to this.
We're counting, we're counting on this.
I do have, oh, yeah, and in fact, you, you should, you've got a copy, I sent a copy of that resolution.
Yeah, as someone who's tried to read that several times, it's all about whatever this Class Six permit is. So it's very detailed about the, the part, the same permit.
It's more technically detailed about the whole carbon capture and sequestration project.
Oh, I'm glad you explained it because now people can watch this and say, hey, listen to me.
Well, see, Bob, also remember, I, I got Kaylee to do it for you. Like, all these images and things that validates what you're doing, the relationship you have with the community. Not only you sending them technical stuff, you're sending them actual visual images of what's taking place. So hopefully Kaylee has had an opportunity to help you out with that here. If you wanna offer a unanimous, unless there's an opposition.
Any opposition to adopting this?
You'll need a motion in a second.
Kaylee, just do a roll call.
I will. You need a motion, Charles, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All right. So, uh, a motion by Ms. Melinda, setting it on Maria. All right. Real world podcast, okay? Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Randy?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Melinda?
Yes.
Ms. Maria?
Yes.
Mr. Bo?
Yes.
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
And Ms. John?
Yes.
Bob, you need us to sign off on it too, right?
Oh, I can have it available that you can.
Before we do, uh, I thought you'd have them in, Ward Six and her, Ward Six.
Well, she swapped it.
I have the right.
Yeah, I didn't do that for her.
That was my part, that was, I get all mixed up. Actually, I think I had you as one. I was, I went around the table this way, so she had to fix all of them. I was waiting for somebody to point that out.
It happened.
I just needed.
I have that bill in hand.
Well, I'm, I'm sitting, I'm fifty, seventy-three years old, and I said, retirement is out the window. And I'm gonna be working till the day I die to get this done, so, which is fine, that's what I wanna do, so.
Hey, uh, Krista, is, is somebody from BioFeed there next week?
Yeah, they're open.
So why don't y'all just give them maybe five or ten minutes? Bob, I know you can't fit five or ten minutes. You have to explain to all the reasons that's from here, so they'll be aware, because you know, we're trying to unite. You know, that'll be put all this stuff together, so if Ken or somebody can be there.
Yeah, Ken's gonna be there. And, and hopefully, one of our strategic partner, as before, is gonna be there as well, same one that was there before. Haka was his mate.
Oh, Haka's.
Haka, he said he was, I saw an email, they, they said he was.
Oh, he, yeah, he had great time.
Let me ask you, once you get through all red tape and everything that's said and done and it's all approved, how long after that point could things start?
Okay, the, uh, I'll take fifteen seconds for that.
You were timed.
Yeah, once, we have, we have to get to what's called FID, Final Investment Decision. That means you have all the engineering is fully complete, all the permits that you need are in hand, and all of that money that you need to build it is all ready and committed, okay? Of which it'll be of that four billion, about seventy percent of that, three billion or so, will be from the, uh, US Department of Energy, okay? The remaining one billion is going, will be private investment. That's the part that, but it wants, but once you have all the permits, and you have all the engineering, and you have the debt lined up, okay? There's a lot of money in this country following these low-carbon ventures, a lot of it. Now, the most difficult thing we have to do, the biggest challenge we have right now is getting to FID. It will, it will blow your mind how much money it takes just to get to FID, okay? Tens of millions of dollars. And so that is the biggest challenge we have right now, is we've, and we're probably halfway there. And, but we continue, we have spent a lot of our time trying, having similar conversations with people that, and we call that developed. And, but we continue, we have to spend a lot of our time trying, having similar conversations with people that, and we call that developed capital, okay? All right, trying to get to FID. So getting to FID is gonna be probably a year and a half from now, realistically. It could be longer, that's the one thing, when I first heard about this project, we're starting to get it in three or four years, I was skeptical. I didn't know for sure, I know for sure, it's, it's a five or six year project, it's just easily that. There's no way to get it sooner, too many regulators involved, too much money involved, too many everything involved. Once you get to FID, the construction, the current construction schedule is approximately three years, just a little over three years. From the day you break ground until the day that you put it into operation. Hopefully we can stick to that, we've got best people in the world, contractors who build, building projects, that's their estimate. So let's say a year and a half, maybe two, we get to FID and then three years to build it, so it's like five years from now. So we're talking about twenty-nine getting into actual operation. But now during that construction period, the average construction jobs during that three year period, average, six hundred and thirty-five. Okay, it's gonna overwhelm this parish, so it's, this is not a Caldwell Parish project, it's gonna draw people in from all over. Inevitably, that's gonna lead to population growth here, increase in the tax base, the revenues coming to this border gonna increase. Think about the sales tax, if you're just talking about the sales tax issues. All right, we are, there's a total, what is it, about ten percent or something, total sales tax. As a manufacturing facility, we're exempt from state sales tax. I had a question to me, I said, well, how about the local, I said, I don't wanna be exempt from the local sales tax. That's the whole reason we're here.
Right.
Okay? So just what, I don't think, one percent goes teacher side, is that what it is? Two percent? We're gonna spend hundreds of millions of dollars on equipment. They will have, they will have to be very elaborate about how we structure this so that, make sure that those taxes come here and not somewhere else. So two percent of hundreds of million of dollars is a lot, okay? Those are the kind of things that we have talked internally about, what is this gonna do for Caldwell Parish?
And those things will happen during construction.
During construction, exactly. And then, once it's complete, and I've dealt with the accessory a lot on this. I have a little inside, rough to disinformation out there. I've, I said, if, if we, if we are valued at X amount and we're, and we're subject to the eighty percent tax exemption, uh, how does that, what does that do to the tax, the abnormal tax revenues of Caldwell Parish? It almost doubles it after the tax exemption, in spite of the tax exemption. So, so whatever, I know you need that, police jury needs it, sheriff needs it, everybody needs it, okay? The parish needs it, roads need it, bridges need it, everybody needs it. It will almost double the abnormal tax bases in this parish if we can get there, okay? It's a long, hard, difficult, challenging road. And I wake up to, uh, new challenges every single day, okay? And some things we think we got fixed and well, no, it's not fixed, we gotta do this instead. Well, we're not gonna do that, we're gonna need to do this, I mean, like, we swap from diesel, swap to, to jet fuel. You think that's just easy, you gotta go talk to the engineers about it, it's a major rearrangement of all their engineering. The way that they, all their heating, uh, heating mass balances, they call it, I guess, that, that has to change around. Everything changes, you change one thing and everything else, it's like a domino, you hit one here and it goes around, everything changes. So we've agreed recently that we're gonna change one particular technology because what we selected four years ago, there's been a new technology that's come out now that we've analyzed it and we believe it is significantly better. And it's actually less expensive, but it's, that kinda gets offset, so we gotta redo a bunch of engineering, which is boring. So those are the kind of things we wrestle with, do we do that or do we not do that? Does that make sense to the project? So anyway, I've talked enough and I appreciate your time and I appreciate your time and effort.
Thank you.
And, and for taking care of this, this will be very helpful to us in getting to the Department of Energy and Natural Resources and getting that permit secured next spring. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
All right, okay, y'all have a good evening. Thank you very much for this.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, I believe it's considered approval of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five People Progression Plan, Ms. Kim?
This is not nearly as important. So you should all have a copy in your folders, I also emailed you a copy so that you would have time to, you know, inter-reading pleasure. Basically, y'all know the People Progression, the, um, the major changes that are made are given to us in the template. So we just fill in the specifics from our district and basically in all the boxes that you see. Yeah, what I'm gonna do is go through each box where we add information that's different from the state or in addition to what the state requires. And I'm just gonna go through those boxes for you. So the first change that we made was on page five in that box. And we added, um, it's, let me just start by saying, let me back up. Um, all the changes that were made to this, to last year's plan were made with teachers, by teachers and administrators. Um, this was not a district team project, this was a parish-wide project. During the summer, uh, each elementary school has curriculum planning meetings and the junior high does. And we, and we talked about what changes we wanted to make to grading policies. Cause that's what affects the teachers the most is the grading policy. And of course, this state changed from, made everyone go to a ten-point scale to a seven-point scale, so that's in here as well. Um, also at, like on the high school level, Ms. Rambles had TCPs and teachers to go over what their, their suggestions were. Then we came back at the public meeting and we went over it with a fine tooth comb and we made those revisions as a team, uh, with those who attended. So on page five, um, the asterisk there in that box, um, we just changed the verbiage of, to make it very clear of who the SBLC team was. Then moving on to page six.
So Kim, each, each school has got their own bill of level committee, right? Chosen by?
The principal.
Is it, is it, is it a certain criteria that, uh, I mean, it's, it's not just anybody that's saying yes, I mean, do you have opposition people? That's on a, a collection of people?
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's always the regular, whoever we're meeting on, whatever the child is, there's one fluid position. It's gonna be their regular education teacher will have the impact. There'll be a special education teacher on the team. Um, there will be the principal and the SBLC coordinator, if she's not the coordinator, then the person who's the coordinator. Um, a lot of times, Ms. Carrillo and I sit in if it's something to do with literacy or if there's a decis, major decision to be made. But generally, by the time, your SBLCs function mainly for the referral process. And, um, most of that's already discussed during the NTSS meetings. When we get to that point, we have all the data and you just review the data with the parent. If the parent can't attend, they're a member of the SBLC team, uh, as well. And if the parent can't attend, they can call in. Is that good? Okay, all right, so moving on to page six. Um, the law changed, um, it was third and fourth grade in the literacy law. Now their focus is just on third grade, so we had to change our verbiage in there. So that last sentence, uh, any student who did not participate in the required literacy remediation in June and did not score basic on the LEAK twenty twenty-five will be retained in third grade and receive extended on-grade level instructional support. Now, if you go on over to page seven, that continues on, of course, this decision to re, to retain a student, um, it always go, we have end of the year SBLC meetings. So any student that does not meet the requirements, they're met on every four weeks anyway. But at the end of the year, we have everybody at the table, including Ms. Meredith, myself, Ms. Carrillo, the principal, the parent, and, um, for the end of the year. And they're made aware, the letters have already been sent home about this long, this week, right? Or last week? Last week. And so they're aware and then they're gonna have a, a parent meeting where they explain it a little bit more. So nobody's gonna be taken by surprise. The only thing different is it switched from third and fourth to just third. So we do have instances where some students are retained more than once, uh, if you see that clause there. This does happen.
You know, what, what, what was your reason?
For example, um, a student may, going back to my memory, one particular student, um, she was virtual. Um, she was truant, um, she failed for truancy. And then when she finally did come back to school, she outright failed. And so she's doing very well right now, but that, that's one that I can think of.
So you think it was because of.
Usually it's a double whammy with truancy and, or they have been out of school for homeschool and the parent decides to bring them back for third grade and they're not on level.
Do we have a lot of that going on? So what, what we have?
Yeah, that's a whole other basket. All right, uh, the next box where it says grade six and seven, uh, we just changed, um, a little verbiage there. I think, uh, the four subjects, math, Italy, math, science and social studies for a total of five subjects. Um, and they look at attendance as far as their, um, everybody does. All right, the next change from last year is on page eleven. So of course, we've added some programs and, uh, for our transitional ninth grade students. Um, we had academic recovery specialists in there, but we are also adding that accelerate reading in addition to English one and accelerate math in addition to Algebra one. Uh, we're also doing, um, the literacy support with Ms. Fisher, so all of that.
I got a question.
Yes.
What is transitional math grade? In page seven?
Um, it's where students that have failed the LEAK in eighth grade and they don't have the skills, but they're, they think they can acquire those skills and the need for remediation, so like a transitional ninth grader. So they're, I guess on, on the radar, like they need more support when they come to the high school, they take accelerate reading, accelerate math to help them with their skills, not just in.
You know how in college you take, if you can't do the college-based math yet, you do the remediation math before you go into the college math? You have to take remed, this is probably like that.
And then they get, they get five years to graduate.
Yeah, it gives them an extra.
Krista, is that what you call eighteen?
The research. Nine, nine. It is, it's nineteen.
Is that a student is more likely to complete high school if they're on a high school campus. So rather than retaining them an additional year in eighth grade, they were seeing that students are more likely to drop out. So if you go ahead and move them over to the high school campus and give them five years to graduate, but you have to provide, they have to go to summer school and then they have to have a remedial reading and remedial math class.
I tell you where they can graduate.
Oh, yeah.
Most of, most of them do, that just gives us that extra year where they won't come against us if they have to go five. But most of them.
With that extra support. All right, page thirteen, the chart in the middle of the page is your major change, that was the state's kind of ten-point grading scale. Um, page fourteen.
So Kim, you can make a sixth and that's a D? How you feel about that?
Um, personally, um, my concern, and Ms. Wells and I have the same concern, my concern is the rigor, um, we're not gonna increase the rigor of our instruction and our assessments to match that and we're gonna have grade inflation.
So each principal, I, I, cause I mean, obviously, again, like I said, I would like to hear what you guys got to say, but this, this is not registered to me. So if somebody convinced me why this is.
After the meeting, I'll tell you what my child says.
Okay. Ms. Kim, Patrick.
On the elementary level, I don't like it because of grade inflation. I mean, I feel like, you know, it was easier to, um.
Is this under state mandate?
Yes, yes.
Legislative. So we're adjusting.
Yeah, on a seven-point grade scale, it's easier to look at a child's work and, and produce, is this A work? Is this B work? Is this C work? But on a ten-point scale, what used to be C work is now considered B work. And that's not a.
So you, so you got a false reading of what reality really is, right? In a nutshell?
Good thing we have our literacy data and we have other data points so that we can compare and make sure we aren't inflating. Um, and that's something that they constantly check and do grade audits. And, uh, we look at their grades when we meet every four weeks and why is this child making an A and they can't read? You know, that, that's.
Right, I mean, it, it appears to me that you're gonna have a lot of parents that's getting incorrect information about their kid when you're thinking that they're making this right here, when they're not. So again, we're, we're not educating kids, we're just graduating kids, which is not a good formula, cause I mean, it's not our fault, but I mean, it's their.
And, and just one more Kim's opinion. Um, if they're pushing us to percent mastery, to increase our percent mastery, but then you're lowering the, lowering the bar here, it, it doesn't make sense to me, but they didn't ask me.
But you got a negative positive.
Let, let me flip it over for a second, okay? Cause I've been on the other side where I've had athletes and I've had seniors at the secondary level who are competing for scholarships naturally. I'm not talking about the sixties, I'm talking about the nineties. And Johnny can make a ninety and my son can make a ninety-two. And Johnny gets an A and my son gets a B. And because of GPAs and all that kinda stuff, that kid who made the A as a ninety has a higher GPA than my son who made a ninety-two. So there is a reason why that they've done this and it, it ain't, it's not just Louisiana, it's nationwide. But this, this, this little ten-point scale right here is the same scale that they use in many states. And when you start competing against states all over for a scholarship to, to Duke or Yale or wherever it is you're trying to go, if they're getting As for ninety-twos and you're getting Bs, we're putting our kids at disadvantage and I think that may be the thought process on it.
Well, the easy ripper to that would be making uniform across the country where everybody's wearing the same thing. So I mean, that's, that just, it just doesn't make sense to, you know, make, cause again, we're talking about athletes, you're talking about a regular student. And I'm for all of that, but to get.
We just wanna make things match, it's, it's a real reflection of the student's.
Do we have any idea what, what it is nationwide?
I don't. Sometimes it's outweighed.
I think their goal would say Louisiana uniform, uh, you know, the process say that.
Hey, and Kim, Kim just made, Kim just made a good point, it's not even uniform, it was not even uniformed in Louisiana. So you could have a kid in Calcasieu Parish making a ninety as an A and a kid in Caldwell making a ninety-two or ninety-three and he gets a B. And you're competing for scholarships for that. So it was a disadvantage for our kids on the upper end.
I have, yeah, that's what I'm, cause the college, the college scale is that, like it's not only doing this, the college scales.
Yeah, I, I was surprised when I got the college, I could make a, I could make a ninety, ninety-four, maybe ninety.
I stayed at a seventy right now.
We just have to make sure that the rigor matches the state.
Yeah.
The teachers have gotta up their rigor to match that ten-point scale.
So, so the teachers are?
They're aware, yes. And, and it's something, we talked about it this summer during our plannings and, uh, because we, we knew it would pass. And so we went ahead and prepared them ahead of time. And it's something that we monitor.
Very many in opposition?
I mean, there's nothing you can do. Figure it out.
Do we have people in place that can do, do the things that we need to do if a student didn't reach their expectations? Cause basically it reads here almost like you're gonna need an IEP on some of these kids.
It's, it's called an IAST, it's an individual academic support plan. And we're about to write them on every kid. Everybody gets a plan now.
That's what I'm saying, we have the personnel to do that?
We do, and.
Yeah, look, I mean, look at these two right here, I mean.
Y'all two wouldn't do that.
Y'all are gonna meet with all.
Y'all gonna meet with all the parents and all that and do all that?
Yeah, the parents, and that's the next thing I was gonna highlight on page fourteen, the literacy support, we have to notify the parents in writing, so when we sit down at these NTSS meetings, we're immediately filling out a letter that goes home to the parent, notifying them and it's signed off and, and sent, but not only that, if there is, um, we talked about this this summer when we met with you and it, it came up, there may be times where we have a parent sit in on these NTSS meetings if they don't, if the communication needs to be, um, more tailored, um, to whatever their needs are. So, I know Ms. Gilpatrick has some plans for her teachers to sit one-on-one with Kim or something.
I can, no, I think part of, um, one of my growth, um, goals for this year is to have the teachers sit down with every student who is below benchmarking level and sit down with the child and their parent and just go over, okay, your child is below benchmark and this was their score, this is where they need to be to be benchmark, here's what we're working with him or her on in class, and this is what, um, what you could do at home that would assist us with this and that constant communication between teacher and parent, uh, this is where we are now, this is where we would like him or her to be. And I think just having that, and for each teacher, you're only talking about four to six students maybe, except with the exception of third grade, that would double because they've got, you know, two classes that they would need to.
And we have a, uh, a virtual parent night that we're, all the three elementaries and the junior highs want to partner in to educate parents on all the different components of the literacy screener and what we do to support their children, because I just saw on Facebook last night, a parent's like, what's, you know, what is this and this doesn't sound like, and you know, what is so bad?
What's the nonsense words?
What's the purpose of nonsense words? And I, I was like, oh, you got about an hour, you know? Um, but that's why we're going to do this is because they don't know. We know all day long, we even had to have Ms. Greerio come in and, um, have the teachers take the test so that they have a better understanding of what their kids go through, so, um, we do the support that's required.
So Ms. Gilpatrick, when you sit down with this parent who, uh, may have minimal skills, uh, may not know what they should know, is it explaining to them what a benchmark is?
Yeah.
So, so, but I guess what I'm asking, like we talked, uh, when we did a meeting, to be as specific as possible and not assume that the parent knows everything, cause they may not know anything, so are we bringing this down to the, the lowest common denominator so when they leave, they can pretty much be, and that's not just you just hitting it personally?
Yeah, so we discussed that today, I discussed that today with Ms. McCann and Ms. Adams of, you know, you've got so many parents that they want to know, they just simply don't know.
And some I'm afraid to ask, because they feel like it's, it's inappropriate or they feel a little bit less than.
And, and it could be that they even came from another state and they just don't simply know our process, but I said, we've got to put this in, in terms of like the most basic understanding of your child is below level, here's what it takes to get them to that level number-wise, that, that's what we're calling benchmark, and then here's what you can do to help and here's what we're doing in school, you know, on a day-to-day basis. And so I feel like if we just put it in the most basic, simplest terms, you know, and then you can engage in a conversation if the person's just not, or if they're really understanding.
Cause they can pick up energy and vibes from the people that they're dealing with, cause I had a lady call me the other day on a complaint, which it, it wasn't true, but that was her perception because of the way the person may have looked or approached her, so explaining to her that that's not the case, cause we're dealing with people that's strange, we don't know much about.
Well, that's why I want face-to-face meetings too, I want to call the parent and sit down with them, cause I feel like that's less intimidating and plus they can put hands on the paper.
Well, I have confidence in you.
Alright, page seventeen, the only change we made there is we just clarified, um, that person, um, and it says we follow the policies of bulletin seven forty-one and one thirty-one as it pertains to altering the school placement. Now, the major changes, um, page eighteen, all the way back. Um, if you see, it, it's our K-12 general grading policy and this is the meat of the plan, this is what teachers contributed to. So, we, basically, we made, um, changes on all the formative grades to, uh, increase those point values per teacher request. We did, um, add a few points at the bottom for all grade levels. Most importantly, this list isn't exhaustive, exhaustive, any assessment that's not on this list, if the teacher wants to make a different assessment, it just has to be pre-approved by the principal. Um, point values listed are the maximum point value that can be assigned to that activity and then the high school has a maximum of twenty-five bonus points and allowed, that is allowed per nine weeks. The reason for this is to keep from grade inflation, because you get bonus points for this, 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 and I have a C in math and now I have a B in math, thanks to our skill change. And so moving on, at, at the.
Wait, 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 so I, I'm looking at this formative grades.
Uh-huh.
I may be looking at this wrong and if I am, just please help me. I don't see a test on here anywhere.
Because it's formative assessments.
Okay.
Your tests are on the.
Your evaluated assessments are on this side.
Where are they?
On the right. You can have three one-hundred point.
Guidebooks, you see section quiz, so you can get a hundred points for a quiz.
No, there's a four quizzes worth twenty-four, twenty-five points.
That's a hundred.
But the second bullet you skipped is, uh, the teacher-created unit assessment. That is using your, um, like if it's the high school, using your guidebook unit and the backwards design for planning and finding the embedded assessments that are in the curriculum, but also using Achievement Network, that database to create an assessment based on the standard that they're teaching.
Why is there not a number on that?
Because they're all worth a hundred.
So each one of those components are worth a hundred?
But it's not exhaustive, if they have something else, they just have to bring it to Ms. Garson.
So pretty much, we got, in a whole nine weeks, we got two hundred points of testing.
Three hundred. In a whole nine weeks, you have.
Culminating writing, I don't, I mean, I don't, I, I think that's, that may, that may be a test, but it's still not me asking any questions.
It's the, it's the culminating task at the end of the unit.
Yeah, it's not me asking any questions through writing.
No, it's a lot of writing, it's a lot of different components that, they work on it all throughout the unit, there is, you may be in the second week of school doing a graphic organizer that's going to help you organize your thoughts for that writing task at the end and it all builds up to that point, cause you're reading novels.
It's just like, we used to write essays.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm all about it, I just, I just wish our state would get in line with, with, and, and everybody else would get in line with, with, because see, this is, this is less testing and more talking and more discussion and more writing and more groups up and more, and I think that's how kids should be learning, but, you know, I'm just looking and I go, pretty much, four unit tests and one teacher unit assessment, two hundred points out of.
They can give, they can give three unit assessments.
Oh, they can?
Yeah, they can give three teachers faces, this is just the best.
But they can still only get a hundred points for the, they can make them for.
So your total point values can be up to six hundred, so you just, it's just that you're going to give three major one-hundred point grading opportunities and the rest of your three hundred points, there are windows of one fifty or three hundred, that's what you're giving for everything else. And it basically, I mean, we, we developed that process back in two thousand fifteen, um, when I was in Christie and Rouse role, we started working on that so that you're not spending a day, a week taking assessments, you're not teach, teach, teach test, teach, teach, teach test. You're getting grades as you're teaching throughout the week, you're taking assessment grades and formative grades and so you're spending the, you know, half of your time in the one fifty to three hundred with formative and then the other is your three one-hundred point grades. So you are getting six hundred points, it's just how are you getting those? And then we line these out to make sure that all the grades are coming from the tier-one curriculum that it's supposed to be taught from.
I'm good with that, I just don't see the ACT lining up with that, I see the ACT with a bunch, I know you have writing, but I see the ACT with a bunch of multiple choice and, and all that kind of stuff and I'm not seeing us do that.
So you have that opportunity in the teacher-created unit assessment, that could be multiple choice, like that.
And also on the fourth end, you have that opportunity with comprehension practice, um, and also with the A net source assessments and the grammar.
So you could actually give a test on comprehensive practice.
Kim, I'm just not paying attention to this, thi- this is K through twelve, right?
Yeah.
So, so let me ask you this, who all participated, Alana, you, were you on this, Katie, were you on it, so, so you guys gave input on what you thought would be?
It's right here, all the input.
Okay, cause, cause again, cause it's, it's always every year, somebody's coming saying, well, they didn't have this input, so I'm making sure that that took place.
We let our departments do it, so our English department did theirs, CTE department.
You had a collection of teachers on the circuit.
And then, it was their whole department.
So what?
So all our English teachers did, our teachers had the opportunity and then our math department, we said this is.
So, so what role did Ralph play in this? I mean, he's the secondary supervisor, what, what role did he play?
He was at the, he attended, he attended.
Did he attend it, did he give input, cause I mean, he's, okay.
So what we did at our school was the same thing as Alana, we did it by departments, we used the old, the old people progression and said, okay, these are the things that you have been giving, but also some of the curriculums have changed, LA got an updated guidebook for, um, for the middle school and high school, I believe high schools will, and then we just got a new social studies curriculum, so we are, we had to sit down and really develop and then modify what we've been using the year before, so it's, it's really a good thing in a way that we were able to kind of, you know, adjust based off the curriculum we're teaching as well, because it does change.
Yeah, what, what I, I guess what I'm saying is, and I just be verbatim about it, I'm trying to make sure that everybody participates, it's not just a select group of people that's basically writing this policy and then I'm having other people that weren't included come to me and saying, well, this happened and this didn't happen, so there was a collect, all I need to know is there was a collection of people.
If they didn't participate, it was their choice. Cause I emailed it out and to the principals, the principals then went over it, but then we also, like I said, each elementary school in the curriculum plannings, every teacher wrote notes and, uh, I got from kindergarten, first grade, they just changed the whole thing and so, um, that's why that's so big. But high school, I got a sheet from the English department that they had stuff all over it and so.
How new is this?
Well, it's current, I mean, we just did it.
I mean, I mean, we've just come up with, this is just how.
We've been working on it all summer.
But, but this is, we didn't do this last year.
Yeah, we did, October, last year. It has to be. Miss by law, I missed it by October thirty first.
Now, get this due, I'm talking about how, the, these certain ways that we're doing.
That grading plan's been in place for years now.
Since two thousand fifteen.
We just updated it.
We just update it every year.
Update the verbiage and update the point values, one of the things I heard from the conversations was in high school, kids don't care about a five-point grade, so they ask, can we increase the value so that kids care about that and so, remember, we said whatever they wanted to do, we.
Really, too, I mean, in K one, I can tell you, we had to change ours completely because we, we got moved from village like, you know, Columbia, and so we had to base ours off of CKLA, but also you've got to understand K one, they're still learning to read, so we actually lowered our points because what we were finding is the teachers were having a hard time meeting the same points that high school had to meet because they're having to individually test.
Or.
Yes, and so whenever we met, you know, we had, we met with our first grade teachers, they came up, we, I mean, literally, we had to look at CKLA because last year was their first time teaching that curriculum and they had to literally build those assessments and then decide how many points and what they were able to do in a nine weeks, because that, when you're testing eighteen students in your classroom, one-on-one or in a small group, that takes a lot, so we needed to back off of how many points were given, so they're not just testing, they were finding that they were testing literally almost every other day to meet the points that say high school, junior high, you know, needed.
Right.
And so it just, it just doesn't, didn't make sense for us to have the same points.
Yeah, well, I mean, for me, when I go to church, I don't just like to hear, hear from a preacher, which would be super tempting, I want to hear from you guys because again, you guys are out there on the front line, okay, and you, you're the ones that have to deal with whatever issue that comes, I just like to make sure that everybody is included in what we're doing, so when somebody comes to me and say that they weren't included, I have a reasonable legitimate answer to say, well, no, that's not the case, this was sent out, this was sent out, this was sent out, why were you not, uh, you know, a part of this, why, why were, why were you not a participant, you know, of this, because again, uh, it's been a history of that and the goal is to move forward to try to make stuff better than what it has been in the past, so if you've done that, you've satisfied me, regardless of what the outcome is.
Yeah, we met one-on-one with our teachers in common playing in person, so we were getting their input.
Yeah, cause I, again, I, I would like to defeat, uh, those who try to make issues and when I have facts, factual information, I can make that presentation when it's presented to me.
My, my whole purpose for the question is, Ms. Bay, I'm not a test person, I hate the way the state does things, I think we have fantastic people doing outstanding jobs, but when it came to testing, this parent had a huge black eye, a big, big black eye. And it doesn't mean that our administrators and our teachers are not doing a good job. So the reason I'm asking this question about this is, is this, is this what we think is going to align us with state testing? If that's what we think as a group of administrators and a superintendent, then I expect our test scores to get better, if that's what we think. I'm okay with it, I don't do that job y'all do every day and I know I got some people in here and I know she does too, that works their tails off, but I sat right there with that lady, she, it hurt her, our test scores hurt and it hurt a lot of people, hurt a lot of y'all, you didn't, you weren't, you weren't proud of it. That's my question, is, is this aligned to where it's going to improve our test scores? I hate test scores, I don't, I, I wish we could just teach and, and love kids and all that, but this is where we are, this is where we come to in this world, so when I ask that question, don't think that I, don't think that you guys don't do your job, cause I know you do.
I think that's a valid question, but I, I think that it's one component, this is one component of moving kids in the right direction, I think we, there are other things that we are doing to raise test scores outside of a people progression.
When we had the, when I came in with my meeting with y'all, and we all met with y'all at separate times, if, you know, y'all work so hard with these kids and you could, you could show us, this kid is here, this kid has moved here, but they're not here as far as the test is concerned.
That's right.
But that kid has made an advance on learning, so maybe in the next time, maybe they have to hold back in the third grade if that's what they need to do, but that kid is steadily learning and building, so as long as each child is learning and building, eventually those test scores are going to have to start showing.
And that's our goal, I mean, we focus a lot on progress, unfortunately, uh, the state focuses on percent mastery and that doesn't, that doesn't show the progress.
But if, if one benefit of the new accountability system, and Christie's going to go over it, but one of the things I like about the new accountability is it emphasizes growth and so that's going to get us, that's, that's one of the good things about that.
But Kim, I think you're forgetting, based on what Alana's saying, when we talked, re- remember, the growth that we're seeing here is not the growth that you're seeing on a state test, which is why I want you guys to emphasize again, where we're succeeding at with regards to your kid advancing is just not according to what the state standard is being set, so I think when you create a narrative that way, you, you get credit for the increase, even though you're not here where the state is at, but your school is still having an increase and I think at some point, if you guys can kind of focus on that, it'll be, you know, helpful, cause, cause you're doing what you're doing.
Okay, here's what they're going to have to sit and let their kids read to them. I mean, that's where it all, I know.
I mean, it's, if that's what, what you're saying is probably about reading, you, Mr. Kim, would always say something about reading, teach a child to read and give them the world. It's something about, uh, teaching a child to read and you give them the world, by teaching a child to read, so, yeah, so that's just a neat saying that you just need to read to your child and let them read to you.
Alright, so we're on page nineteen. Um, and this is on every one, so that's why I'm highlighting it one time because we changed on everything. Teachers must post at least one grade each week of the nine weeks. And the minimum point va- value for any formative assignment is fifteen points by the high school. Um, if you move on to the junior highs square, um, page twenty, you see the same exact revisions at the bottom. Um, they kept the maximum of twenty-five bonus points, same verbiage, same changes. Moving on to page twenty-one, this is our grades two through five.
I got a question.
Yeah?
Give me an example of an assessment that's not on the list that could be approved.
Well, it would be a teacher-made assessment based on the standards, using, uh, of her knowledge of the standard to create her own assessment. And it'd be the principal's job to look at that standard to make sure that that test aligned to the standards.
So for example, like in, like say Zern, you know, Zern teaches things so many different ways, but we go back and we look at the state standard. And so the teacher's like, I don't like this assessment. It's not, it's, it's not testing how the standard is wanting them to test. So I'm gonna create my own assessment, but they're gonna have to bring it to their school building leader to get it approved. It's not saying they can just test on anything random. It's saying that the, the assessment maybe is a little confusing. Cause sometimes there are problems that kind of are more confusing than helpful. Um, and so just need to redo that test. It's not saying that you're changing it completely. It's just the way maybe it's.
The curriculum embedded assessments don't always address the standard. Your curriculum, none, none of our curriculums are perfect, even though they're tier one curriculums. They're not perfect because they don't always match Louisiana standard that has to be taught that is tested openly. So we do a lot of work with, does this match the standard? And we look at the, um, the performant, the achievement descriptors and we look at what is expected of the kids on the lead and compare it to what the, the tests that they made. So a lot goes into it if a teacher wants to do that. And they do. A lot of them do.
Sometimes it's just format.
And sometimes they do it in common planning together. The whole grade level will come up with a test. And she's in there, so it's approved.
Kim, quick question. Uh, who would make that ultimate decision? The teacher or the principal? The teacher felt strongly that this need to be taught that way or the test need to be this way. Principal kind of disagreed, wants to make an adjustment. Who would ultimately make that, that final decision?
I guess ultimately if a teacher and a principal were disagreeing, you know, it'd come to me or Ms. Brerbyo depending on.
But I mean, if the teacher's the person that's teaching the kid on a daily basis. And I, I guess I'm trying to prevent.
But if that teacher's not teaching the standard, they're not doing their job.
I mean, you may wanna caution what you said because, you know.
If it's gonna be aligned to the lead test and the standard.
Right.
The standard, yeah.
Yeah, so, so what I'm saying is that the teacher would have, I guess, strong input as long as they're following.
Yeah.
And it may be just providing that question to make it clear. It may just be just tweaking that question that they have chosen.
Let me give you an example.
Please.
Third grade Zern, our curriculum Zern, um.
What's Zern?
That is the math curriculum.
Okay, so you gotta talk and ladies.
Third grade math. So one of the standards says, uh, one of the lessons in third grade math had the teacher teaching time up to, um, ten, uh, ten minutes, five minutes, you know, one minute till, you know, all of that. The standard does not require that.
Right.
So that teacher adjusted that lesson. We did it as a team, actually. We discovered it during planning and they adjust that lesson to match the standard because a third grader's not capable of the last time yet. So they have to learn your basic time, you know, the basics of the standard and the progression of the standard. So that's one, like real world example.
Well, that's a good example.
Yeah. Okay. So on page twenty-one, fourth and fifth grade, basically, they have the same changes as everybody else. We did, Ms. Brer and I did make a change and, and the staff did too. On second and third grade, that last bullet, skills-based test, test must include spelling, grammar and phonics together in one test. When you give standalone spelling tests, grade inflation happens. Cause you can memorize that.
Melissa, your, your school is, uh, fourth, third, fourth.
Second, third.
Third, third. Which, which school is testing twice? Do you have a separate?
Yes.
Okay.
They have a ballgame.
They've got elementary football game tonight.
I just kinda wanna get some, some input from her since her, her school is gonna be, make basic class effective.
Yes. So she's at the bottom here, uh, fourth and fifth grade. This is her, um, list. And then over, uh, formative grades, still the same, the same language. They really didn't change much on the, the right-hand side. That's the same as, um, last year. Um, and then on that back page, they have their maximum on page twenty-two. Um, they have a maximum of fifteen bonus points. That was their change. On K one, all of this is different. Every bit of it. So. And that's, I have all the teachers' emails and, uh, this is what they wanted. And this is what they worked all summer developing these tests and, and they, they've got it, they've got it going on. Um, K one elementary math, all of that's different. The whole business of it.
Um, Kim, if fifty percent or more of your class fails.
Yeah.
A hundred point assessment, then the standard must be re-taught and retested. That's to the entire class? I mean, to.
If fifty percent or more of your, your class failed, you did not teach.
So that means the ones who did succeed are gonna have to be taught twice.
Well, it's, yeah.
Might need to teach the teachers some.
It's in your best interest.
So what, you're not in the hot seat, Kim. So is the, is the other fifty percent being punished?
No. What, I mean.
If I was in a class, I would.
They may not have made a hundred. So the same time around, they may make a hundred. Where the first time around, they made an eighty.
Hey, hey, Barry, even, even as a, twenty-five years ago, we did that in the classroom. And what we did is, you made a hundred on the test, you may not have to take it this time. But what we would do as teachers, we would go, here's what I need you to do. I need you to sit with Suzie or Johnny while we're doing this. And we're all gonna work this together.
But let me ask you this. Are we assuming that the kid didn't learn versus not considering that the teacher may not have been teaching?
No, that's what we are considering. Is the teacher's not doing her job. And that's in K one.
Is there a.
This is just kindergarten, first grade.
So what, what remedies would be put in place, I guess, if.
Well, I mean, we've already done it. I mean, I saw you do it the other day. Uh, student work analysis.
Talk about it.
Yeah.
So we have, in, in our common planning, one of the things that the teachers really like to do is student work analysis. So we had, you know, three teachers, one in that pod was new. And so whenever you look at all your, you know, your assessments of all the students, you go through and you categorize. How many As, how many Bs, how many Cs, how many Bs, every, you know, who mastered this concept? And then you look at each teacher. Okay, she had eighty percent of her class that, you know, passed. This teacher over here only had fifty-six. So let's talk about how did you teach this skill and how did you teach this skill? And then they come together. You may see some, um, you know, teachers going in and co-teaching. You may see some, you know, observatory observations of teachers. Trying to figure out where do we need to support this other teacher who maybe didn't teach this concept the right way? Because obviously, only fifty-six percent of your class passed, and we're talking about passed, we're not talking about made it a hundred. I mean, so most likely, like he was saying, you know, they may have made an eighty or they could have made a hundred if the teacher had explained the material and taught the material in such a way that they, you know.
So is each school flux waiting or is uniform at each school? Each, Melissa, what would you do at your school? Something different?
No, I, well, no, we, we are on a, we don't have that same grading scale, but we do the same policies. And we do a lot here observations.
So what's expected at one school is pretty much being implemented?
And you'll have teachers, I had this last year, you know, and they sat down in student work analysis and common planning and she said, oh my gosh, my teachers did not get this. I did not teach this well. Like, they start realizing it themselves without us having to point out. How did you teach that? How did you, you know, and so they start talking and it just, it works.
So is that, is that a school, Kim? Is that something that the principal deal with first or you guys deal with it together or it, it goes up the ladder? How, how does that?
They have, they deal with it on the regular. Um, I hop in and out of their student work analysis when I, when I'm available. Um, to, and we, if there's a problem though area, they call me and ask me, can you come to this one, you know?
And, and we all aware that you, you go in as a friend more so than the enemy.
Yeah.
Which is, which is good, you know, cause they already know that they're in trouble. They don't need to be, they don't need to know that. They need to know what some remedies are.
Well, and a lot of it's not necessarily that they're in trouble. It just may be the way they taught that lesson was confusing to the students. Or maybe they didn't have a good, they hadn't internalized the lesson enough to understand how it should be taught.
See, I, I like what you guys are telling me. I'm, I'm just hoping that it's being implemented the way that it's being told. Because if it is, that, that cuts out a lot of, uh, issues that I have heard over the past two or three years. Because it's, it's doing exactly what it's supposed to.
Yeah, the whole idea is to go in and support.
Right.
Because, I mean, we can't love our teachers to failure like we love kids to failure. We can't overinflate them like we over. You know, I'm not gonna have grade inflation with teachers either because that doesn't do them any favors.
Right, because obviously, you know, as he, you know, forestated, it, it ain't looking the way that it should. So if, if we're doing everything we can to pick them up, lift them up and push them forward, I, I think that's a, a positive remedy. Uh, that should, even if it's going from, you know, one to two, two to three, three or four, it's still going forward.
Are they taking the same test?
Yes.
On the same day?
Most likely. Um, it just depends. Like if the teacher's out and they don't, you know, sub to teach that lesson for them because it's an important lesson, a foundational skill, they'll, they may be a day or two off. But for the most part, they're within, you know, the same lesson within two or three days. So yes, but the teachers sit down and they create these tests together. And so they, you know, they have them in a Google Drive, a shared drive. If one is like, I don't like the way this is formatted, can we change this? I mean, they're having conversations monster.
Kim, just.
Sometimes they throw a question out.
Oh, yes.
Or we do the question.
Sometimes it's just the format of how the number bond is, you know, set up.
It's just not relevant. Maybe the picture that's on the test is not, kids don't even know what that is, you know.
It's had that.
Yeah.
Yeah. A poppy.
So what I'm hearing is having, um, centers like we've done is really improving the way that you teach your children.
I was just about to say that, uh, when I could wiggle my, my thought in there was the, you know, you're, we're building.
Right, cause don't, don't, don't put it out there that it shouldn't be. We're, we're not worried trying to be, but it's, it's showing that we're going in at that risk.
Right, we're building. And I feel like we've gotten the teachers on board with that concept of we're building. And I think the beauty of the center schools, one of the beauties is the teachers really love this time together to be able to collaborate and to build tests together. They're no longer feel like they're out there on an island creating tests by themselves. I mean, they have partners that are helping them build these tests and they're putting their brains together and it's for what's for best, the best of the children, so.
Well, and I'll say, cause I did say this a couple of times in our meeting, but not everybody was there, that I have already seen a huge difference from the fifth graders all being together and coming to the junior high. Because when I talk to those sixth grade teachers and I say, how is it going? They say, they're so much more prepared now. And they already know each other and it's going a lot smoother. Um, and everybody was being taught the same way. So the skills were not conflicting like they had been in the past, which is a really good positive for our school.
Yeah, and I think the issue is we have an inside conversation, an outside. Inside is doing what it needs to do. And it's there, it's just getting to the outside, which is getting to where the state, uh, wants it to be. But Kim, I wanted to tell you that Bo and I kind of agreed before the meeting that we was gonna keep you up the longest.
I had memories of last year.
Somebody else will be on the hot seat the next week. No, I'm just lying. We didn't do that, but I might ask you another question.
I'm glad, I mean, I'm glad to talk about this.
Well, since, since we met, uh, the day after, when I met with you guys, I, I can see that, uh, there's been some reinforcement. Uh, and I think you guys are taking this serious. Uh, again, we won't know until the results, but if, if there's some movement, uh, you know, I think we can be a little bit more satisfied. But I, when I left the night of the board meeting, it was nothing that you guys could have convinced me that we were doing the right thing. Because again, but the way you're explaining it is that the anomalies are here on the inside. It's just what the outside is saying, which is not a reflection of what's really taking.
It's not. And it's very discouraging, um, to the teachers and the principals and us, you know. But mostly the people who are doing the, the hard work, which is the teachers and the parents, it's, it's discouraging, but we're hanging on.
Well, I'm, 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 I'm admitting, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you some more questions.
All right. Page twenty-six. Page twenty-six through twenty-seven, all we really did was update vocabulary. The vocabulary was too, oh, two thousand fifteen aged. So we updated some of the academic vocabulary that's changed, uh, throughout the years. We also added, um, to the PhD, the electives and science, um, on page twenty-six. Um, Mr. Simmons got with the PE folks and they added sports skills test. They got more defined about what grades they give in, in PE and what that looks like, um, from a parent concern at the meeting. So, um, we got with them. So they added smart fitness goals and sports activity participation for their one hundred point and sports skills test for their formative. Um, then we added on page twenty-seven, that last, uh, bullet underneath creative extension, extension projects. We added construction and welding projects. And at the bottom of page twenty-seven, the first bullet, last sentence, this was added per, um, teacher request. Secondary elective courses may exceed six hundred points based on our long-term projects with prior written approval from the principal. Principal discretion will determine the use of midterm finals as a value to points at the high school. And, um, and then just copies of the test should be turned in. I think that was Ginny's request when we met. They have a lot of projects. Now, we had to change on page twenty-eight, um, the first and the third bullet at the top because of the grading skill change. So we have now have a floor of forty percent for the first and third grading period. And, uh, they must make an average of sixty or better to pass and earn a half credit. So we had to change those numbers. Um, and at the bottom, where it says individual academic plans, support plans, I changed, will provide individual academic support plans because we found that out after we met. Um, you know, they like to change things on us. Um, and that's it. Any other questions?
Long work.
Yeah, it is long work. If Mr. Gary can sign.
He missed that one.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna sign one of your copies.
We need a motion to.
Yes, I need you to approve it and if you don't mind.
I'll make the motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
Carla, please.
All right, now you can sign.
All right, thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
All right, David, you, uh, consider.
I also have a long one. I'm feeding it right now.
Did you let her go first?
Davis, Davis, the only reason you won't be long is because I'm about to leave. So that's the only reason you won't.
Carla said I have five minutes and Katie said, keep it short. So I don't know how, how I can do that, but I will try. Uh, if you go to page two of one nineteen. Yeah, you did get mine. We need to bind us back. So I borrowed those from, uh, I, I, I did a B. So, um, yeah, well, page two.
We're gonna share it. We're sharing.
Uh, page two, has a recap of all your funds. This year we got forty-two funds, last year we had fifty-six. Uh, funds that went away are all federal. Uh, they're towards the bottom of that page. Uh, so it was about seven hundred thousand dollars D for this funding. Uh, the red, the, the, uh, funds are highlighted in red. Those are the ones we all always talk about. General fund, fund one, sales tax, it's going to launch in maintenance, fund reward. Um, the big, big takeaway is if you look to column I, you have a nine hundred thousand dollar projected deficit for general fund. And, I mean.
Why?
Well, I'll get to that in a minute.
Cause I mean, it's, it's, each, each time is almost like.
I understand. I, I'm. I, I'm sure.
Well, but, but, but what I'm saying is, this is not for me. I think the public has a right to know why we operate the way we operate.
We'll get to that on page ten. But for now, we're gonna finish up on page, uh.
Yes, sir.
I had plenty of time to memorize my speech.
Sorry.
You made your wife tonight, David.
Sales tax, we budgeted two point nine million revenue, some expenditures, and that's a kind of, uh, wash every year on that account. So we budgeted that one to zero. Change lunch fund, we have one point two million in revenue, one million two hundred forty thousand dollars in revenues. Budgeted one point four million in expenditures, deficit of one hundred sixty thousand dollars. Maintenance, we have that one budgeted even. Uh, last year it brought in seventy-seven thousand dollars. This year I'm projecting even balance. Uh, hopefully we can, we can trend that way and not more deficit because it seems like every time James walks out of my office, he has more bad news. So, and then the final two columns, indirect costs. Uh, at the top, those are general fund. We have three hundred seventy-six thousand in the prior year. This year I'm budgeting two hundred forty-seven thousand dollars. That's a hundred nineteen thousand dollar decrease. And if you look further down, all those federal funds are the ones that contribute to that number. So you have indirect cost, uh, in prior year, uh, same number, uh, three hundred seventy-six thousand, sixty-three dollars. This year, two hundred fifty-seven thousand is supposed to, is supposed to go. And, uh, look at those bottom fourteen funds, that's a hundred thirty-three thousand dollars that we will not have again. And that's all from Esri money or grants that were, you know, one-time grants. Or grants that have been phased out over, over, uh, in the past. So, uh.
Can you explain that, Esser? Or is that?
Uh, no, I, I'll jump on this. Uh, Esser has, let's say, has funds one thirty-one, one thirty-two, one thirty-one, one forty-two. And those are big, pretty big numbers. Hundred four thousand dollars that we had in revenue last year, five hundred forty-eight thousand, one hundred ninety-five thousand. And if you look a little bit above that, you have fund one forty-three, Esser E-Interventions, that was a hundred ninety-seven thousand. This year it has one thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars available.
So those federal grants that we were receiving, we were able to get about what, twenty percent indirect cost off of those total numbers. That's all done. It's gone, September thirtieth, everything is gone. So we will not be earning that twenty percent off of all that money anymore.
So, so David, I guess my question is, if, let's say if we had, uh, five hundred thousand dollars, Esser, are, are we spending a million knowing that we don't have the, the addition, I mean, because it, it seems that it's, it's more than just once, you know, here. Now, I, I know that we gave raises and I supported it and I still support it. I, I don't think we did anything wrong, but was that a factor in, uh, what we could have maybe waited on?
I don't think so.
Okay, because I, I support it and I, and I think it was the right thing to do. But if it was something that I need to be looking forward to from here on out, then so be it. But I, I felt like those things were valid. Uh, it was, the money was there, it was available. Uh, we trusted the judgment that you gave us. So I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure that if it was something that I personally may have done that could have prevented.
I, I don't think, I don't think any of us really foresaw the continued decrease of NIP, uh, of student counts, which is NIP.
Right. So how many students were down?
Uh, currently, we're down around a hundred.
A hundred times what? Per student?
Eighty-one hundred.
That's almost a million dollars. So.
Fifty thousand dollars.
I, I guess the question is.
Till last year we were down fifty. This year we're down a hundred.
Forty. Last year we were down around forty. This year we're down.
And I, I don't really want to know what was the reason because it, it, you know, it's there. I guess this is, this is not something, you know, as Nick, uh, Kim, principal, I mean, what's being put in place to? Well, let me just be honest. See, some people say when, when, when they come and they do whatever they need to do, there's no justification or reason as to why would you stay here? So if we have kids leaving, are we, what are we doing to make sure that these kids are not going? I mean, are we trying to do everything we can on the table to make sure that they stay? Or we're just saying, okay, uh, not in this expression, okay, go, don't go where you're going? Because we don't need to lose a, a kid from this point on. So a, again, I'm asking, what is that we're doing to Elena at your high school? Uh, to maybe prevent a kid from, I guess, leaving or going to another place, even if it's a disruptive kid? Because obviously, a hundred students is a hundred students. That's.
How, uh, who they are, if they're in, if they're in.
Well, you've got it.
I have this one.
Yeah, you have a chart that you have. That's in here, in this chart right here.
Just move.
If you look on page four of one nineteen, it'll show you the, the enrollment. David did a really good job of, of making it by the, by each class. So in that second box that you have there, if you go all the way over to the right, to the class of twenty-twenty-five, that's the number of students who were with us as juniors and left as seniors. And if you back up, the next class is the junior class and then the sophomore class, freshman, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. So those are, those are the, the net decreases in students at every grade level. And it, and it's alarming. I mean, we, we talked about it yesterday at our staff meeting. And then Monica sent me an article yesterday because we're like, where are they all going? I had Kaylee run reports and I'm like, where are all these kids going? What number did you give me?
I think ten went to Corrigo Private, uh, sixteen went homeschool.
So, so you can, you can almost.
And a lot of move.
You can almost foresee homeschool increasing. I, I, and I guess, I'm not trying to be a SSA, but I mean, administration needs to, to make sure that this is something that's on the forefront because a hundred kids is a hundred kid. If you get a hundred and ten, you're only going up. So you're going, you're going, you're going closer to a million dollars. I mean, that, that's, that's a problem more so than the kids, you know, not passing the grades.
And then now with the, the passing of the, um, the Gator bill, I mean, it's just, it, homeschool used to not be the option it is now. Um, we, we've talked about where are, where are they going? And, you know, a lot of people can't find work. And so dads work off on pipelines. And so moms now realize, hey, I'll just take our kids and I'll homeschool them so we can go be with dad.
Right.
Or, or I can do something different. Or I can now take my money and, and go to a, a private school on a voucher. And so, I mean, there are just, there are options that you.
Well, it's funny, we have less people in this parish than we did ten years ago.
Well, and.
We're losing all these students.
Monica sent me a, a nationwide, and I need to forward it to y'all, because she sent it to me right after our meeting yesterday, a nationwide study of, of where are all the kids going? And we are losing population everywhere. One of the things I had not even thought about yet was people are not having as many kids as they used to have. Because it's too expensive, you know? And I thought I had not even thought about that. But the birth rate, there's a whole piece in there about the birth rate being low.
Tommy Gerkey just sent me a copy of the Washita Citizen and they are rep, reporting for this week that, um, Washita Parish lost a thousand students and the state, they're estimating around four, four thousand students. So it's, it's a statewide where every school district in the state is gonna have to have this conversation and figure out what to do.
That doesn't bring any more money into us.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't.
That would be my reply to Rebecca. Are they, are they projected to be over one million dollars in the hole?
So.
What are they doing that we're not?
I don't know that, but I, one thing that I, I will say, I think is eventually gonna catch up is, like, they got, uh, like eighty million dollars in Esser funds. Everybody's about to run out of that money. So I think that everybody else is probably gonna start feeling the pinch. But those that, you know, we got seven, they got eighty. Um, so they had a little bit more fluff money. But to, um, I think to answer your question that you asked earlier about what are we doing? I mean, we had a conversation about a student at the high school today who's, um, involved in some of the workplace experiences that we've never had before. Um, and he has earned a job and he has told the person who's supervising him, I come to school just because I get to be in this workplace, um, uh, program. So we are trying to be innovative and pull out all the things that we can to keep these, these kids there.
There's a, a massive effort at, um, at, at every school to, to get kids. I'm not sure if you've seen about attendance. Be at school to make, make it fun, to make you feel warm, welcome. But especially at the high school too. I mean, we, we're, a lot of work in Mr. Amos's PLCs is on making students feel like they belong, making students want to be a part of your classroom, want to be a part of this school. Making, I know the junior high, y'all have started all kinds of clubs. So that every kid in the school is in some type of club so that they want to be a part of and, and want to belong. Because we want our kids there. We want them to want to come to school. And so a lot of efforts have been made to try to make school a place where you want to be. And you can't get this experience if you're not in our school. So.
See, I guess, Rebecca, I look at it this way, uh, which is the full picture. We, we had thirty teachers that, uh, on the teacher retention, which tells me that maybe it's something that we're doing as to why they don't want to work here. If we got students leaving, then maybe that's telling me that maybe there's something that we're not doing. So I guess, what I'm asking is, are, are we searching, not just blaming everything else? Are we looking within to see what is it that we may be intentionally or unintentionally doing to make sure that we're, we're doing our best to, because thirty teachers is thirty teachers. I mean, you can't play with those numbers. A hundred students is a hundred students. So when you start to factoring those things in from an administrative standpoint, when I'm looking at it, I'm saying like, well, you know, I mean, I got a right to say it. I've earned it. I've been in thirty years. So if, if we got this many people leaving, somebody need to be saying, well, what is it that we're doing or what is it that we can change? If we got students that's leaving, we need to be saying, okay, what is it that we can do maybe to, you know, keep them? Now, that, that's a hard pill to swallow. But I, I think, I would like for us to look at the entire picture rather than just saying, this happened, that happened. Let's look at everything, even if it's us, even if it's this board. We need to all be held accountable to what we're not doing. And I think if we look at that and be honest, I think we can move forward. So hopefully, I don't know, I mean, I don't know what you can do with a hundred students.
I don't know where you get thirty, but if that's the case, then thirty teachers have kids. That's another issue. So if you're losing thirty teachers.
Well, I think it was thirty.
I don't know where.
I did not pull the teacher members. I had pulled the student members.
Yeah, they're taking their children with them. So if I, if I'm a teacher and I've got two or three kids in the system and I moved to Washita Parish, my kids have a lot of time to do it. Mine, everywhere I went. And we do have people that don't move that way. Wherever I coach them, my kids.
Some people you just make believe.
True. But you try.
And there's no accountability.
But losing a hundred students.
There's no accountability in homeschool. There's no accountability in homeschool. There's no accountability in private. So the pressure, sometimes they don't want to, to see the data and see in those venues their kid can achieve.
Because they're not held in the same. Some people just are frustrated with public schools because of testing and because of the laws and all the things. And so they're just, now they have options. And so, you know, just take my kid and do what I want to with them. So. These are conversations we have on the regular about what do we do to attract? What do we do? I mean, I had a conversation, just thinking, what do we do? With a teacher at the junior high when I was there the other day and, and he came and he was talking, I said, how's it going? And he said, it's going great. And he's like, I feel like I have just stepped off into heaven. And I was like, seriously? And he said, yeah. I said, where have you taught? And he told me where he taught before. And he said, I just, these are good kids. I'm really enjoying the kids that I'm teaching. I'm enjoying the people that I'm teaching with. And he said, I had it narrowed down between this school and another school. And I said, well, what was the deciding factor? And he said, the social media. I saw how much y'all celebrated your kids and what all you were doing for your kids. That was why I came, literally. Kay, he was standing there with me when he said that. I was like.
Actually, I had four offers.
Yeah. And he came here because of that. So we are trying really, really hard to attract teachers and attract students and families.
My god, that teacher, oh, she just loves to hear. And every time she walks in, walks up my mind. Twenty, she went over and supplied that she did the twenty phone.
They were basically, they were deliverers.
All right, we go, uh, to page ten. I, I would be, jump to that page here because that's probably the full page. Uh, this is just general fund, fund one, fund one. Uh, column C shows that it changes. And if it's in brackets, that is a unfavorable grade. Uh, NIP, I'm projecting at least three hundred forty-five thousand dollar decrease. Uh, I don't know that number more closely than I do the favorable rolls around as far as the actual. Uh, high cost revenue, uh, high cost for, um, state revenue. We have that projected to two hundred thirty-one thousand dollar increase. So that's, that's one of our few great ones. Indirect cost, we already talked about that one, a hundred nineteen thousand dollar decrease. Temper sales, obviously not gonna happen again. Uh, going down, health insurance, active employees. We had a six point six five percent increase on OGB rates. So that one went up a hundred eleven thousand. Go with the purple down, that was a hundred seventy-nine thousand for retirees. Uh, Tyree insurance went from one million two forty-five to one million four twenty-five. Uh, go back up a little bit to the one hundred sixty thousand that's in green, that's teacher's retirement. Had a rate decrease of about ten percent. And we also had a, uh, what, uh, laser as well, but that's a smaller population. Uh, go down to property, uh, sixty-nine thousand dollars. Most of that was related to having a decrease in, in purchasing, uh, assets. And really, it was, uh, forty-five of that sixty-nine thousand is non-cash that we have to book for the donation of the Trojan statue.
Spartan.
Spartan, I'm sorry.
Somebody throw something at me.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So those were our major changes. And predominantly, uh, I, I, I mean, it's that MFP that is just wrecking our world. Uh, for whatever reason, I, I mean, Rebecca's talked about it a little bit, uh, whether it's us, whether it's them, so to speak. I don't, uh, I'll, of course.
If it's us, we are trying to work on it. And I'm open to suggestions. You know, at any point, if anybody has an idea of how we can recruit more kids, I'm in.
So that's the recap of general fund. Uh, turn to page thirty. This is sales stats I was pretty, pretty quick. Uh, went back, there's really nothing to talk about on this one. Uh, we worked with, last year we bought in two million nine hundred nine. And I budgeted two million nine thousand, uh, two hundred nine, two million nine hundred thousand revenue and similar amounts for expenditures. So that's all on that one. Lunch, uh, is on page forty. Forty? Yeah, four zero. And, uh, not a lot of change here. Uh, I did budget a four percent increase on food costs. Uh, some of the, and I'm gonna jump back up, I'm sorry. Uh, federal reimbursement, I budgeted that one at a million dollars. This past year we had one million sixteen thousand dollars. I've kept on a little bit of increase due to, and, and that's factoring in the decrease in population. But it's also factoring in, um, on the high school operation, there were, there were, there were more snack options available that we're not doing again this year. So hopefully that's gonna drive more kids into the food line. Not, that was the reason we did it, but that was one of the offset, uh, family reward, but benefits. Uh, NFP transfer, we're doing a one hundred thousand dollars, which was what we did last year. Pre-pandemic, we were a two hundred thousand dollar transfer from general fund. I'm still trying to keep it down just to relieve general fund.
The more our kids eat breakfast and lunch, the less money that we have to take out of general fund to pay back the nutrition program.
Our, our required, we have a required transfer, I think, of around twelve thousand dollars. So we have to do that much. Anything above that is to subsidize. I did meet with Sandra on this on, on, on other federal. Uh, last year we had a hundred sixty-three thousand. This year I budgeted a hundred and five. She thinks that's probably realistic. And some of these grants we don't know about until later on in the year. So that, that's a little bit of a downside on, you don't have a budget. Um, and then the rest of the line items are actually pretty, pretty much in line with the prior year. And then go to maintenance, uh, page forty-seven. Um, this is mainly funded by property tax, seven hundred fifty-three thousand dollars. Uh, last year we brought in seven hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars. Property tax went up, so we're expecting a little increase there. Uh, the five hundred ninety-five thousand dollar transfers covered the insurance costs that we put into our fund in order to satisfy the seventy percent requirement on the general fund. So it's a little bit of shell game. That's house fund and portion, uh, across the state. Uh, there's really nothing else to report from maintenance then. And then beginning on page fifty-one, all the other funds, and those are all state and federal grants. And, uh, well, limited sections, there's elementary program there as well. Uh, but those are largely zero-based classes. So. That's all I have on that. Happy to entertain any questions, anyone?
I have to go, man, but I gotta watch this.
I understand. Um, so anyway, entertaining, probably, we talked about the worst one of other, I guess. A yes is indicating that you're not happy with the budget, but you're good with the numbers. So you can still vote yes even though you hate the numbers. So you can still vote yes, even though you hate the numbers. Uh, and no voting, you don't believe the numbers, but you might have any, uh, culture conscious. You have a motion?
I'm making a motion. We approve the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. I second.
All the voters aye? All right. Item L, consider a motion to approve the one-time stipend funded in a special MFP account of two thousand dollars. Our teachers certified out and one thousand plus four thousand, including ineligible positions, pre-ked out.
David, you did say that does not affect anything that we've just done.
The state's.
Yes. Right. So I mean, that's not effective.
This is separate money.
All right, I'm gonna go yes.
All right, so for the difference. It's not different, yeah.
No, we're on IMF, we're on IMF.
I'm trying to get out of here.
We're on IMF, it's on this page. And we have five hundred nineteen thousand dollars from the state to pay out for two thousand and thousand dollar stipends. And we did this exact same thing last year, we all talked. And it specifically exempts or excludes pre-k.
The five hundred nineteen thousand dollars cover what we're paying them?
It'll cover all this three or four thousand dollars. And last year we were about thirteen thousand.
The, the big difference in this is last year, we gave it out, half of it in October and half of it in April. The state has come in and said we have to give it all out by December fifteenth. So rather than giving it in two, we have to give it in one. And so we're asking to give it out on, um, December the sixth.
I make a motion, we accept.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor of aye? All right, item D, consider a motion to approve the one-time stipend. I'm on the wrong one.
So the, the money that came in does not cover our pre-k and head start our teachers. So Monica is asking to use her fund to cover theirs than we did it last year.
I'll make a motion, we do it. Second.
Y'all understand it?
I don't understand. So does our money cover the?
It comes out of his pocket.
So does it cover?
It's out of the money.
Yeah.
The amount of money she had in this code.
It's not out of General Fund at all.
Okay, all for it.
All right, you got a motion?
And a second.
I got it.
All right. Go ahead of me.
We did it last year. Yeah.
All right. All right, item H, discuss and vote on adjustment to legislative stipend payout for employees whose account codes do not match their job responsibilities.
You did this last year. There's some people who are not.
Where's it coming from?
Where's it coming from?
From the state, the state sent us money.
State sent us money?
It's not out of General Fund.
Okay.
For item H.
Yes.
Okay.
That's you, David. This is your name on it.
So, uh, I think last year we paid out Sales Tax.
Yes.
I think we did. I'll make a motion, we do it.
All right, second. All in favor of aye?
It's totally likely.
All right.
Yeah.
Item I, consider revision and approval of differentiated compensation plans for twenty-four, twenty-five.
That's incorrect. This is in your binder, um, or no, your folder there. We did this last year and approved it for two years, but we had to adjust the numbers this year because they didn't send us much money. So we had to, um, but basically they, they give us money and tell us how we can spend it. So the one way that we can spend it is to, um, pay teachers in critical shortage areas. So your secondary math and secondary science and then all your spec, K-12. And so, um, we were able to give a one thousand dollar stipend for those teachers who are teaching in those roles who are certified or practice their practices. Um, the next part that we've sent it in is that, um, for mentor teachers, last year we paid them two thousand. This year we had to lower that to seventeen hundred, um, at, so eight fifty per semester because we didn't have as much money. And then the same thing on number two with buddy teachers. Last year they got a thousand dollars and this year we eight hundred and fifty because we didn't get enough money. So.
So basically what we're doing is making sure that everybody gets their money.
Everybody who was paid last year gets the same thing, it's just a different amount.
Because they didn't send.
Because they didn't send enough. Last year they sent, uh, sixty-two thousand dollars. And, um, this year they, we had twelve thousand dollars rolled over. This year they sent forty-two thousand dollars. So we had less to, to play with. So we had available fifty-four thousand dollars.
I'm making a motion that we accept.
All in favor of aye? All right. All right, consider approval to lease three school buses until May twenty-twenty-five per recommendation from, from Transportation Committee, Lee, Marina and Johnny.
I make a motion, we accept.
It is gonna cost a lot.
I understand that. We got that, we got to have it. I mean, I already talked to James.
The lesser of evil.
We gotta do it, you're right.
Ain't no giving and but around us.
And we need our children in safe buses that are gonna run, so.
And you ain't even get spring sports yet.
All in favor of aye?
I feel.
She second. All right. What's that?
So item L, the accountability update gets a little bit lengthy. So do y'all want to table that for the next meeting?
Cause it's the new accountability law.
I'm sure Bear and her.
Bear is the one who asked for her to, to do it. I sent y'all the video.
I think we should wait on Bear. I think we table it.
So we table that.
And we discussed as a group, we feel like you guys have access to our email addresses on the website and you know our phone number. So if you need anything from us, you can always reach out and we will.
I give the motion second to table that item.
Second.
I'm making a motion.
And we all have written notes, but, you know.
I thought we already did sign the letter up, but.
Yeah.
We did.
We did.
All right. All right, district leaders, up, babe.
I do have one thing to say. I'm sorry. In the bottom of your folder, or should be the last thing in your folder, you have a, uh, invitation to our parent-student college career night. That's next Thursday, the nineteenth, at six o'clock in the gym at the high school. And we have a lot more businesses and colleges this year than we had last year. And it's open to all eighth through twelfth grade students. Um, and they did get bold statements for coming. And we will have food trucks there, so you can eat supper.
It was so good last year.
Bigger and better this year.
All right, Superintendent Board.
Um, we need to move the October board meeting due to fall break. So I'm asking, we look back at the schedule, um, if we can move it to October the fifteenth. It is a Tuesday, but we do not want to do it on the next Thursday because that is the homecoming pep rally. So, um, if we can just move the meeting to October fifteenth.
That's not the junior high football.
I do not see junior high football on my calendar. I see, um, Major has a penalis.
Major has a penalis. All right, I'm scared.
And Ralph Star has a penalis.
I see a pizza pig out.
Junior Central.
All right, I see a jern.
Do we have to make a motion?